The report on internal controller of financial reporting, the report on agreed upon procedures applied to appropriations limit, City Council and Management Report, and of course, the financial report. You can also find these on our website, starting probably tomorrow, maybe late afternoon, we'll have it posted out if anybody wants to look at more of the details because it is a lengthy report. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Michael O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor, welcome back.
My pleasure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. So I'm here to do a presentation of the CAFRA for the City of Calistoga for the year ended June 30, 17. I'd just like to turn to page one of the CAFRA. This is our independent audits report. The city has received an unqualified or unmodified opinion. That's the best you can receive. Everything is done in compliance with accounting standards and auditing standards. Next, I would like to turn to page 15. I just want to show the bottom line on page 15. Feel free to interrupt me with questions at any time. On page one, I did want to note that our opinion is on our letterhead. We do work for the City Council. The City Council ever has questions of me or our firm I work for, you're welcome to contact me anytime or our CP or the firm, and our contact information is on that. So page 15, the, this is on the full accrual basis. This is as if the city was a for-profit business, and you have two activities, government activities and business-type activities. The last line, total net position, this is your assets slash your liabilities. The city has almost $26 million in net position governmental activities and almost $19 million in business-type activities. Business-type activities, that money is pretty much comprised of infrastructure for the water and sewer. And that's very typical of water and sewer business-type activities. I would like to now turn to page 16, the next page. Again, feel free to interrupt me with questions at any time. This is the statement of activities. And again, for the governmental activities and business-type activities, this is a full accrual basis, as if you were a for-profit corporation. The basically, third line from the bottom, change in net position for your governmental activities was $5,742,000, and in the business-type activities was 4.1 million. So you received more than you spent with those activities. The next page, 17. This is your balance sheet of the governmental funds. On a modified accrual basis, it's close to cash basis. So a lot of people want to know how much money we have in a certain fund, how much money we have in this pot, for that pot. And these, that's what these funds are. So your general fund, basically, the second line from the bottom, has eight and a half million dollars fund balance. Your total governmental funds over on the right has $17 million fund balance.
Could you speak closer to my phone lines? When I'm being audited, I hear you.
Okay. Yeah, sure, sure. Absolutely.
And could you repeat those last two figures? Thank you.
And that's all I wanted to point out in the, on the governmental funds balance sheet. Next, I was going to turn to page...
Can you repeat the last two figures you gave?
The last two figures? Okay. Sorry about that. The general fund fund balance has just over $8 million, and the total governmental funds fund balance for all governmental funds is $17 million. Outside of the general fund, most of that money is restricted to different types of grants and projects. Next, I would like to turn to page 18. And page 18, these are the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance on the modified accrual basis, which is, which is close to a cash basis. Basically, your net change of fund balance, third line from the bottom, and the general fund is excess of revenues over expenditures of about $100,000, a little over $100,000. The total governmental funds had 1.3 million. Next up.
The only reason, the reason why our net change in fund balance was only $112,000 was because we made that 1.8 million expenditure to our unfunded liability. Had we not made that, then you would have seen that to be a larger number.
Okay. If you could just clarify, Gloria, the council chose to make that contribution to the unfunded liability in order to save expenses in the long run, and we were able to do so. And the unfunded liability is?
Right. So this is for our CAFRs, our retiree benefits, and we've been setting aside about half a million every year to pay for this. And with the council, we met with the two finance subcommittee members, and we determined that this was the year where it would be of great benefit to us to pay that 1.8 million to bring down our unfunded liability.
And the long-term projected savings by paying in advance now was?
It's 100 and...
I believe it was $168,000 a year.
Which the total number was $5.4 million savings, cost avoidance for, for adding cost to it. So it was a considerable saving.
Which works out to about an 8% return on our money, if I remember right, Gary. Seven and a half to 8%.
Seven and a half.
Okay.
Seven and a half, if I recall.
So it's a pretty good bang for the buck.
Thank you. Mr. O'Connor.
Okay. So now I wanted to skip to page 20. This is your statement of net position of your business type, of your business-type activities, which include your water and sewer funds. The water and sewer funds at the bottom, net position, this is your assets less liabilities. In the water fund, you have approximately $11 million net position. Most of it is tied up, again, into infrastructure. And wastewater, you have $8.3 million. Again, most of that is tied up in infrastructure as well. The next page, page 21. I wanted to point out on, this is your statement of revenues and expenses and changes in fund balance, changes in net position. So this shows all your revenue and expenditure activities for, for your water and wastewater funds for the year ended June 30, 17. In the water fund and in the wastewater fund, if you go six lines up from the bottom, it notes income loss before contributions and transfers. The water fund had a loss of just over $500,000, and the wastewater fund had a loss of $225,000. That was mostly offset by capital contributions, which then brought in, changed in net position to a million 300, or almost a million 400,000 in, in the water fund and almost $3 million in the wastewater.
So these capital contributions, contributions, these are the one-time contributions by Silver Rose and the Enchanted Resorts projects. So if we didn't have those one-time impact fees, we would still have, you know, our net position would really be in the negative.
And that's all I wanted to point out in the CAFRA.
All right. So council members, questions?
In the course of our deliberations about water and wastewater fees, there have been some questions as to what we have done with the impact money, that impact fee money that has come in. Today, item five, which was on consent calendar, we approved a resolution accepting development impact fees and a report in compliance with Assembly Bill 1600. Did your investigation of our finances support the report that we just approved?
Well, I'm not specifically familiar with the report you just approved, but we did look at these revenues and make sure they stay in the budget and are spent on these projects, on water, wastewater, and we saw no issues.
Okay. So...
And I'm just going to add one more thing. This AB 1600 report that was prepared, those numbers were taken from the CAFRA.
Okay. I think that's essentially what I was getting to. So if there is any question on anybody's part as to what we have done with those funds, that report, which is part of the public record tonight, and probably is available back on the back table back there, that folks can have a look at that. Incidentally, you've got to have one and a half cheaters here to read some of those little numbers. So they're big numbers, but they're printed little. So anyway, I wanted to make that clear, that the impact fees are properly accounted for and distributed.
Any other council members? Councilmember Barnes?
I would just like to compliment Gloria on her continued fine effort that she puts into all this stuff. It's a lot of numbers, a lot of crunching, and it's just been verified by an outside expert. So thank you, Gloria.
In this report, is there a list of future capital projects and the estimated valuations of those projects set in here?
There is not a list of capital projects. You do have, the only thing that you have is construction in progress, capital asset, but there's no list of future projects in it.
Dylan, I know, I know we, we have a list. Just can you recall what, what the value is of projects that are on the books that have to be undertaken in the next 10, 15 years, 20 years?
It's approximately $65 million.
Correct. That's when you include water, wastewater, and streets. The numbers I'm most familiar with is the 10-year capital improvement program that we put together for water, wastewater, which is just over $40 million for the two funds. So when you add in our roads projects, that's where you get to the 65 million. There's going to be other miscellaneous projects in there, but for those three main funds, it's about a 60, $60 million plus, depending on how much, how much we've done. The CAFRA doesn't have those, those reports in them, but our annual budget does. So I can provide those to you. I can provide those, they're available online. This, this document doesn't have looking for. This is more about looking back what we've done.
And just for clarification for the audience, road maintenance is covered out of general fund monies. It is not considered an enterprise fund. Sewer and water would be an enterprise fund. So we have about 45, 40 million in, in enterprise-related capital projects on the books, but then there's an additional 20, 25 million related to streets and roads.
Yes, you're correct.
So our combined loss from water and wastewater, operating loss, comes to about $744,473, if my math is correct, and sometimes it isn't, but, but the reason why we don't have a deficit there is because we had an infusion of cash from the impact fees.
Correct.
That paid up for some of that, or all of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also want to remind you, this is just for one year, so there's losses from previous years that are not...
No, I understand that. I'm just looking at this last year.
But by the same token, the impact fees are only for one year.
Yeah. They're one-time revenue. Any other questions of Mr. O'Connor? City Manager Feek.
Just, just one comment I want to mention, because it was brought up as a question last time. If you were to go to the notes to the financial statements, this is a lot of good anecdotal information, which is also provided. A question came up last time about how much existing water and sewer debt do we have on the books? And if, and if page 46 in the notes, we currently have about $14.5 million in existing water and wastewater debt alone. There's also about $3.5 million of debt tied to the general fund. But for water and wastewater enterprise fund debt, 14,493,000.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
Yeah, I have one more question. Where in here would I find out how much we spent this year on legal fees defending our water and water rights? Where would, where would that show up?
That is actually, that is sort of a detail that would not be presented, but that is in the city's, you know, accounting system, or these numbers are combined.
So what would they be combined with? It seems to me it would be a regular line item, legal expenses.
I don't think there's a separate one for that.
There's, yeah, there's not a separate line in the course that was paid out of the general fund, so it'll be under, let's see if I can point it out to you.
For water and sewer, you have maintenance and operations.
What page are you on now?
Now, this is on page 21.
But the actual litigation fees, like silver paid out of general fund, so those would be on page 18, and they would just be under general government.
So there's in this, it's just lumped in, no break up?
It's lumped in, yeah. There's not an actual break.
Be in our working budgets and things like that?
Right.
Okay. Where, which, where would it be?
So on page 18.
Yes.
Under expenditures, general government. She's got to...
$2,088,000.
Yeah. So those litigation costs are in within that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. While this is not a public hearing, is there anyone in the public who has any questions or clarifications on our CAFRA? All right. We'll close the public comment. And as you stated, and I know it seems counterintuitive, an unqualified report is a excellent rating, correct?
That is, that is. That's the best you can receive.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thanks for continuing to work with us. Gloria, thank you as well for doing a great job.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the, the recommendation says there's a need for a motion to receive and file the report.
I'm about to get to that. Okay. We'll entertain a motion as presented to accept the report as presented with no modifications.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford. We have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 10, update to City Council regarding mayor's community forum discussion and follow-up items from January 2nd public hearing. The recommended action is to accept the report taking us through this item this evening will be City Manager Feek. Dylan, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to provide a brief update to City Council. You know, since our public hearing on January 2nd, we've been able to go through and do a few things. First, I, we, I've been talking with Kathy. Kathy, I'm not going to pass it off to you. I'm just going to state this stuff I know you have there in front of you. We were able to collect after closing the public hearing, the total number of protests that were submitted to the city, 488 is the final number. And the information for that, what we needed to receive for parcels with meters was 1,597 total numbers. 50% of that would have been, you know, 798. So we did not receive enough protests to meet that 50% majority, and I just wanted to let people know that. That was something we did immediately following the public hearing. And really, what tonight's agenda item is for is to give council an update. Certainly, there's two council members available at the community forum last week. Since that time, in addition to the community forum, there's been a lot of comments, a lot of questions, a lot of people bringing ideas to myself of things that we could propose and consider for the city council. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that I've been able to do, maybe some of the comments and questions which were raised at the public hearing, which I thought were great, which was great input, and then really leave it open to City Council for you to provide any kind of direction to staff. My preference tonight, especially because the public, the community forum happened last Wednesday, we had two business days to really complete any work. I've got a lot of work orders in to our consultants and putting together options, but there's, there just really wasn't enough time for us to digest the information and to present council with options to consider. And so at the end of tonight, I'm hopeful that there's good discussion, direction to staff, and we can provide more information to you on our February 6th meeting. Certainly, the idea is, you know, we're also not in a rush to adopt new rates tonight or anytime. Let's continue to move down this road of studying it and understanding what's going on. The, at the community forum, which Mayor Canning, Councilmember Kraus attended, I think there was approximately 50 people. It was a great forum, great setting. We do the two ovals, as many council members who've attended are aware, members in the community who may not have. It's much less formal than a public meeting like this, where we have hearings, come to a dais, you have to state your name. Everybody sits down, we're facing each other, we're talking, we're neighbors. And I think there was a lot of really good questions which came up. You know, questions about, could you, could you adjust those variable and fixed rates differently to have less incentive for high water, for people to use excessive amounts of water? Questions about, could there be more steps taken to give residents a little bit more control over managing their water bill? Even simple things like billing. Could we go back to a monthly billing process versus bimonthly on the residential side? It appears many people are, you know, like this idea of this rebate. The city does receive grants. If we do refinancing, can we offer rebates to people, you know, maybe tie it to a meter, tie it to something where they can actually get money back or a discount down the road? Questions came up about, you know, new ways to pay for it. Could we collect TOT? Could we use TOT for something like this? Could we modify our wastewater billing so it's more tied to usage rather than a fixed rate? A lot of, a lot of good information, a lot of good feedback, all things that could be considered, and it just takes a lot of time to put some information together to show what the impact is. At the end of the day, you know, the recommendation that I want to bring, my goal and objective is to have sustainable enterprise funds. And as silly as it sounds, you know, a $500,000 deficit or a $500,000 operating loss in water is not as bad as the last four years. And so, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but we still have considerable work to go. Immediately following the public hearing, what I personally have done, I have a list of things. I took a, you know, notes and minutes from a public hearing, I took a presentation from a public hearing, and I took water and wastewater rate studies, and I went right to our financial advisor and said, "See if you can get me new interest rates on our outstanding debt." What, we've gone as far as mailing Prop 218 notices, doing the study, holding and closing a public hearing. We're committed to doing the right thing, and so I'm attempting to get some kind of, I'll call it rate lock-in that allows me to go refinance debt. It's truly a cart before the horse scenario where I can't refinance until I have new rates, and I would love to be able to do that, but we're working on it and trying to be creative. We've been discussing mechanics of things like rebates. What if we do get a FEMA grant for $3 million, and how would we provide rebates to residents? We are looking at our capital improvement schedule. Because we're already moving into the calendar year 2018, which is more than halfway through the fiscal year, there are projects which it's very possible and likely that they will be pushed out. Some of the projects like Fage Water Tank. Fage Water Tank requires a lot of permitting to go through, and it takes time. And so if there are good, reasonable delays in capital improvement projects, can we slide those out and push them out? Things that last year, when we started the rate study, we built into our rate analysis, and now that we're a little bit further down the road, maybe it's something we can consider and certainly could have an impact. We're looking at that. One of the, the options that you'll see on the 6th is, you know, if we move these projects around, here's what it would do to the rates. We're looking at expenditures across all funds in preparation for our mid-year adjustments, but are there things that we can do? Not that we haven't done this, but that we're continuously asking, are there other things we can do to minimize the impacts of these rates? And I don't want people to think like we're not asking that, we haven't been going through that exercise. We always are, but that's something we're doing again even more, just to make sure we're on the right track. We're looking at all of the assumptions that have been planned into the water and wastewater rate study. So every assumption that's built in, not only this first year, but in year four, in year five, are those true, accurate assumptions? If there are, if there are changes that could be made or different considerations that could be made that could have an impact on rates? And we'll, we'll be looking at those. A specific example is the interest rate on future debt. As was discussed last time, if the city has issues debt in the future, what's the interest rate? If we use one number, 5%, that has a different impact than if we use a 3% or a 2%. You know, we talked about monthly versus bimonthly billing. Well, there's, there's a cost to do that, but also there might be an impact on a resident. And one thing that people have communicated to us is with the cost of water and wastewater in the community, you know, the bimonthly bill is pretty hefty. And so spreading that out from just a household budget perspective would be, would be helpful. Little takeaways like that, that we're, we're hearing back are things we want to look at too. Still more work to be done. You know, I'm actually really fortunate that I have three weeks between tonight and the next council meeting so that we can put more information together for council, and I want to have that available to you. I want to say thanks to the many people who've come to my office and shared thoughts, ideas, things we can do. And, you know, I'm very hopeful and optimistic that come January 6th, we have more information ready. And, you know, council, you'll make a tough decision then, but if there's anything else that we should be doing, anything in addition to what we're doing, I think that's really the purpose of tonight, is provide any direction to me that I can, so when I come back at our next meeting, I can have the information you need to get closer, if not make the decision. That's my presentation tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Please, yeah, absolutely.
So ahorita vamos a discutir acerca de lo que les estaba informando acerca del agua, las posibles opciones. Ahorita no se va a tomar una decisión en que ya se van a implementar los nuevos costos del agua. Simplemente se están poniendo toda la información. La semana pasada hubo un, la comunidad se juntó con uno de los city councils, el mayor y el city manager, y discutieron más ideas, discutieron más, o sea, hay que agarrar, estamos agarrando toda la información del público, todas las ideas, y ese es el propósito de esta noche, agarrar todas las ideas que ustedes tengan y salir con un plan, un plan de cómo hacerlo tratando de afectar lo menos posible a los consumidores del agua. Y están haciendo una lista de diferentes ideas y proyectos y cómo minimizar el gas.
Thank you. So as Dylan has stated and clarified and mentioned on the January 2nd meeting, this is a discussion still in progress. There is a cap, which was outlined in Prop 218 notice that we sent out, and there's where we are today. So somewhere between what the rates are today and the maximum cap allowed under the Prop 218 statute and process is where we will end up. It is very much a discussion. Councilmember Kraus and myself participated in what I felt was a very healthy dialogue last Wednesday at the community forum. There were ideas that came out of that. There were also clarifications that came out of that. We are certainly moving forward and entertaining all ideas and concepts. I think it's important to understand and appreciate that a lot of the suggestions made are already things that we vetted. But with that said, there may be new ideas that we can try through, you know, try to work through. There are restrictions we have, compliments of the state of California, that allow us to do certain things and not do certain things when it comes to the financial management of the enterprise fund. You certainly do not have to like the data presented, you certainly do not have to like the financials, but our financials have been audited multiple times. Unqualified audits are the highest rating you can get. Again, you don't have to like the math, but the math is the fact, and that's what we need to work on and work through here. At the end of the day, we must have a self-sustaining enterprise fund. It, not doing so for the better part of 15 years does not allow us to lower our interest rates on current debt, does not allow us to seek future debt, because we can't present to financial institutions the fact that we are self-sustaining. What did come out of our conversations in the community forum last week, certainly for me, was a greater number of people appreciating or understanding the fact that something needs to be done, there will be some sort of increase, and it's just a matter of how we work through that. I don't know if Councilmember Kraus wanted to share anything before we take any questions.
I think that was an accurate, accurate representation of, of what was discussed. I think the points that Dylan has here are reflect my recollection of that also, and I'm interested to hear any additional comments that are made here this evening.
So I will open it up for public comment. It's not a public hearing, but it is public comment, to share ideas. If you did share your idea with the group on when, this past Wednesday during the community forum, understand, we've taken note. Dylan's working on a lot of it. Obviously, Monday was a holiday. There are two, he's had two working days since then. There are outside consultants that need to be worked through on this, so... There are outside consultants that needed to be worked through on this, so don't feel obliged to restate information already presented, and we'll start from there. I do have speaker cards, which I will start with, and then if there's anyone else wishing to address on this topic, we will move forward. The first speaker card I have is from Antoinette Mailard. Should you so choose, share with us your name and address, but you're not required to do so.
Antoinette Mailard, Lily Street, Calistoga. Good evening, Mayor Canning and councilmembers. I would like to address, this was covered in the earlier meeting, but not all councilmembers were present. I would like to address the fixed fee approach presented at, in the proposed water and wastewater billing model. That component has the unintended effect of causing the structure to be highly regressive. That is, it benefits the large customer at the expense of the small one. For example, a household using seven units of water, that's 100 cubic feet, a month would pay 50% more per unit than a household using 14 units, and would pay 150% more per unit than a household using 56 units. The difference in dollars varies year to year in the proposed model, but it is consistently dramatic. In the year 2020, for example, that gap translates to $11.17 per unit for the 56-unit user and $27.15 per unit for the seven user, unit user. As consumption rises, the gap widens further. I believe that this is indefensible for two reasons. It means that small users are subsidizing large users, and it discourages rather than encourages conservation. One argument in support of a fixed fee model is the assurance of a steady income during occasional drought periods when consumption falls. However, the new reality is that while we may enjoy periods of respite with ample precipitation, climate experts, and our own common sense tell us that water shortages and drought will be the norm in California going forward, our water rates should reflect that reality and should also reflect the moral obligation to encourage and not discourage conservation. The ratio of metered water to intake to wastewater output will never be exactly one-to-one, but it is clearly highly proportional, as is reflected by the way restaurants are billed. So I look for other places where a fixed fee might be defensible for residential users.
30 seconds, Antoinette.
Thank you. And while there may be others, I found only one, and the cost of processing bills, including meter readers, is clearly a fixed cost for all consumers, large and small. Flat fees are simple. Analyzing historical and seasonal data and crunching numbers to develop a responsible projection for a realistic per-unit water pricing model is, that is equal for all, is complex. It may take some time, but it's responsible, it's doable, and it's fair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Dylan, if you could just, no. Just a reminder, folks, this is a city council meeting, not a pep rally. Dylan, this, this option was presented, and we appreciate that from Antoinette on Wednesday. And I know, Dylan, we've already reached out to consultants to look at a non-fixed, not a, a non-flat rate on the wastewater side, correct? So that's a work in progress.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, I have Julie Garcia. Julie, welcome. Share with us your name and address, should you so choose.
Thank you. My name is Julie Garcia. I live on 1812 Foothill Boulevard, and thank you to the, our councilmember, Iris Lopez. She took her time to give us some more information to a lot of our Hispanic, you know, community about this issue. As a community, community member, you know, I know that it's, that issue is very important to fix, you know? I'm agree that we need to do it sooner than later, you know, because it's affecting our health as well, you know? So, but I just feel that the way that you're proposing to increase is way too much for a lot of us, you know, that pay $300, $400, some five years is double, a little bit more than double, so for us, it's not affordable. So I know so many of my friends, that they're moving away. So our community is moving away because they can't afford, you know, to be here. So it's pretty sad, you know, that they're moving away, and people from out of town are buying houses, and they're renting their houses on weekends, or they're just using them to come weekends, you know, spend weekends. So we don't know a lot of our neighbors, so it's pretty sad. So I feel that there are so many ways that we can do to get some pounds, you know, like big action, you know, wine action a year, a lot of more activities for our community, you know? If you let us use our community, you know, club here, and then we can use so many activities every weekend, so it can be good for the community, and we can, we can earn more money for this cause. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Yvonne Henry.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, City Council. As the city moves forward on this water and sewage issue, it seems a good time to clear up some confusion and misunderstandings. For instance, some came to the conclusion that the protest letters were provided and intended to stop all infrastructure improvement. Obviously, a misunderstanding. The protest letters were presented to encourage the city council to look for options, not to stop everything. Second, the majority, if not all, Calistoga citizens do understand and accept the need for water and sewage improvements. We got it. We got it in detail. We get it. Third, some came to the conclusion that Calistoga citizens were unwilling to pay anything toward infrastructure improvements. Obviously, a misunderstanding. The majority is actually willing to pay something. We're ready, okay? But the key word is to pay "some," not to the proposal that's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Just on the clarification, so on the clarification of the Prop 218 process and protest, Yvonne, I wish Prop 218 was that flexible. It does not allow, Prop 218, a protest process gives you one option. If you achieve protest, no change can be made. It doesn't allow you the flexibility. What we stated from the beginning and continue to state is this council has demonstrated on this issue, as well as all issues that's come before us, an openness and willingness to have the discussion. Unfortunately, Prop 218, as approved by the voters of the state of California, and whatever year that was, gives you an on, earn, off. There's no middle ground. So that's where we are.
We're very comfortable, did everybody understand?
We're very comfortable, ve- very comfortable, very comfortable, but again, that process only gives you that one option. We got it, we're all good. All right. Luis, Louis? There we are, sorry. It's my eyes, it's not your writing, I assure you. Please share your name and address, should you so choose. Thank you.
Bueno. Bueno, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Luis Bernal. Yo vivo en Calistoga, in 1445 Lex Street. And we understand, and we support the, we want to be a competitive city because the changes are coming, and we need to have a really nice infrastructure that we can support all of the changes that are coming up. And we are, I personally, my opinion is that increases are inevitable, they're unsteerable. The changes are coming, nobody can deny it. We are very behind infrastructure, everything, but now this time it's water. So I could say that the pockets for my side is not the same than the other ones. Maybe the other ones are going to be the same. I mean, different. They are not, they don't have the same earnings that everyone. So to me, it's very important to say that this community has like a 5,000 and a little bit more people. So if we get together, we can make this happen. Don't impact too much in our pockets. If you need some help, that we can help you out to make it lower the, the cost, to lower the rates, we can help you out. I'm personally could be the first one to help you out. Also, there's, I think he's looking for some, Dylan is looking for some alternatives to reduce the spending ways. I could say that maybe there are actions, maybe we can tell to the wineries that if they donate more money, it can be included in their taxes bill, so it can be a good idea. There can be a different point of view that the people that they have enough money to, to support this one. There's, I mean, how I said, this is a small community. We have a big problems with the, we are making a big problems with the small things. So I think if we get together, we can make this, changes can happen, and we, or you can connect us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have? It's getting less and less, so we're catching on. Just prolongs the meeting. So I don't have any more speaker cards, so if there's anyone else interested in addressing the council, we will take comments, and we will take questions. Iris, we'll take questions or comments in English or Spanish.
Si alguien más quiere expresar su opinión después de cada speaker, pueden alzar la mano, y si tienen preguntas, contestamos en inglés y español.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Charlotte Williams, 59 View Road. I have a quick question, one quick question about our law, the city council, the law firm that represents the city. Is this a law firm? Are they expert in mediation, or do they only advise and litigate? Does anyone know that? Are they mediators? Are they certified?
You say law firm being the city's law firm, Bert Williams Swornson? I'm actually not, I'm not sure. We can, I can find out, but I'm not sure.
Okay. I wonder that because of the litigation costs. I just wonder if mediation has ever been attempted?
If you're speaking, I can answer that one.
Many times.
Very, very candidly, relative to the litigation to the Reynolds and the Gorman lawsuits, having been involved, multiple attempts at mediation and compromise and settlement have been made to absolutely no avail. I can assure you.
Official, official legal mediation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sat in a meeting for six hours with that same discussion, two separate rooms, mediator, judge going between the two, come to a conclusion, it gets blown up at the end, so yes.
Okay. All right. Then, I wanted to go on to some facts about Proposition 218, which was the voters passed in 1996. So these are facts from the Legislative Analyst's office. It says, "Proposition 218 expands California residents' power to challenge local revenue-raising measures. It shifts the burden of proof onto local governments." Okay, that's one thing that it says. And here is an Appendix 1 in an Article 13D, Section 4D. This is the law. So, excuse me if this takes a bit, but it's not too long. "Each notice mailed to owners of identified parcels within the district pursuant to subdivision C shall contain a ballot, which includes the agency's address for receipt of the ballot once completed by any owner receiving the notice whereby the owner may indicate his or her name, reasonable identification of the parcel, and his or her support or opposition of the proposed assessment." It doesn't say a notice, it doesn't ask for a letter, it says a ballot. So that's Prop 218. It goes on to say, in Section 6 of the same Article 13D, "The amount of a fee charged imposed upon any parcel or person as incident of property ownership shall not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to the parcel." So that gets me back to.
30 seconds.
Who's incurring the greatest cost? This is the law, proportional cost of the service attributable to the parcel. So which parcels in town are incurring greater cost? And if we can't determine that because we are not in line with the 1976 law from the state of California that said nobody should be dumping geothermal water into the wastewater system, 1976, long time, and if the people, the owners of those parcels are dumping geothermal water into the wastewater system, which makes it very expensive to clean, I think that's a proportional cost we need to be looking at, or the city gets itself onto shaky legal ground, right there.
Thank you.
It's in Proposition. Okay. All right.
Just to clarify, again, there is no cost associated with processing geothermal water because there is nothing pulled out of the geothermal water at the waste facility. There is a cost to geothermal water coming to the facility, however, those generating geothermal water, commercial properties, spas, et cetera, are charged a premium for their water in, in order to accommodate that cost. We are in the process of metering those geothermal contributors, commercial geothermal contributors, to see exactly how much geothermal water they may be sending. With that said, and a point we made at the community forum is, the surcharge that they are paying today may indeed end up being more than what they're actually sending to the system. It also may end up being less than, but as we sit here today, we don't know that. But a very important point of clarification is, there is a surcharge paid by those geothermal users to accommodate for any incremental costs in managing their water. There is no expense to pulling any elements out of geothermal water because it's not required by the state at this point. We are aware of the possibility that in our next license renewal, that may be an option, which is part of the reason we're getting to a metered process. Okay? Anyone else? Go for it. You can line up behind Sophie. There we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm just trying to connect the dots, and I have a few questions here. My name's Dennis Lang. I live at 1322 Cedar Street, and I do appreciate the information that's been given to us by Dylan, but I still have a few questions. The exact number on the rate increase proposals, as I understand, is 15% the first year, 14% 10, 10, and 10, correct, over five years? I'm wondering, is that compounded? Is it going to be more than that? That's 59% in five years. Is that compounded each year depending, you know, for the next year?
Yes.
It is. So it ends up being more than 59%, obviously, from the original. Okay. And the annual revenue that's going to be brought into the city from this increase the first year is 300, roughly $380,000, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And I was just curious about ways in which we could possibly not put this on our mobile home park owner, or residents, and the people who have spoken here, the residents here, who it is really hardship on, and we see that because of the tier rates gone, you know, there's no incentives here. So some of the other city expenditures, I'd like to know if they could be released, or if I could find them out. Advertising, I think you call it economic vitality. How much do we spend each year on this economic vitality to lure tourists to our city? I know we have a contract with the, with the Chamber of Commerce for that. How much does the city pay for that each year?
425 or 4...
The city spends $400,000.
$400,000 would completely cover this rate increase for this first year?
It's $400,000 to bring in more than $6 million in TOT revenue, so.
And you don't think people.
We're going to stick, we're going to stick to the topic.
Okay.
Point is made. If you have other questions, please continue.
But just a point of clarification, Dennis, the advertising marketing comes out of the general fund, so this is an enterprise fund. So if we have a shortfall in the enterprise fund, we have been subsidizing the shortfall out of the general fund for the X number of years, but for us to refinance and get a better interest rate on all of our. better interest rate on all of our debt service for the enterprise fund, we can't do that unless, unless the revenues are equal to the cost.
Well, that question's coming up down the road here.
So in the future, in the future, so once, once we get our, our revenues in order and we can lower the interest rate, and if we have more users coming online, such as the resorts, and revenues start, we start showing surplus and reserves, then in the future we can start to discount and issue rebates. I'm just trying to clarify.
Okay. What other questions do you have?
Yeah, I think I've got what you're saying. And then we have another expenditure I've seen, which is pool maintenance for our pool in town, 160-some thousand dollars. And then in aquatic services, some $264,000. Can you tell me what that, I know the pool, I guess...
It's for the operation of the community pool.
Okay. And the aquatic, what's that? Aquatic services?
That's all part of the, that's all part of the recreational program associated with the community pool.
When, if you'd like, when the meeting's over, Dennis, I can show you, in our water, wastewater rate tables, we provide an itemized list of all the expenses in the water and wastewater fund. So they're all there. You know, a lot of the things you've talked about with economic vitality, you know, aquatics programs, it's all general fund money, that's all, that's not part of any of this. So I'll show you exactly where you can find that information, which is each individual line item of the expenses in these two funds, capital projects, personnel costs, everything. It's all, it's all there. I'll let you know where it's at.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. It just seems to me that this, this budget issue is not necessarily a water issue, it's a budget issue. It's, it's looking at ways in which we might be able to, to work with our budget here. I also understand that just to hire an employee in the city is an average of $113,000 a year for, for that. And, and, you know, it just seems like there's a lot of money being spent a lot of places. And like I said in a letter to the editor, you know, I've got a 90-year-old mother here that who just can't make ends meet. And we hear that people are leaving the community because they cannot make ends meet. And, and this particular rate increases is not equitable, where businesses that produce a lot of water and wastewater are not, are being charged the same as people who try and conserve. It just seems like we really need to represent the community and not just a small portion of the community.
You have three minutes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. As was stated before, and Vice Mayor Dunstford just made the point, we can continue to subsidize water and wastewater rates, but those will be at an expense or at the expense of other programs. So we can easily cover this difference if we close the community pool. We could easily cover this difference if we cease marketing the community as a destination, which pays for everything else we have here. We can easily cover this expense by eliminating all recreation services. We can easily cover this expense by reducing police and fire coverage. That's not, we're all very well aware of that. What it comes down to is we have to get to a self-sustaining system, and we don't have that today. I'm happy to propose that we close the community pool so that we can cover the costs of these increases, but you will need to be here on that first meeting when the group of ladies who go water aerobics every week come in and have to address that matter. So these are choices we all have to make, and these are choices that we as a city have been making, not in the best business option available to us over the last 15 years. Next.
I wanted to make this one follow-up comment, just so people understand. If, if we get ourselves in position where the revenues are equal to the cost, and, and we're in a position to refinance our debt service, which then ultimately long-term lowers cost, we are also in a position to receive grant monies, free money, from the feds and the state. But we're not able to qualify, we can't even present an application because we don't meet the qualifications. And sometimes these grants can be in the millions of dollars. And if we don't receive those grants, then those projects are going to be on the backs of all of us. So we have to get this right and get things moving, and then on the back end, we can start to discount and rebate.
Sophie?
Good evening. Just to mention, Chris, there are also men swimming in the swimming pool, not only ladies.
Well, there's a particular group that were...
Sidebar.
Have made themselves known.
Sidebar.
Absolutely.
Water is one of our most precious resource. I mean, it's normal that this debate is going to be heated because people missing water or not being able to afford to pay the water bills, it's going to be dramatic. A few questions for you. I'm sorry, I could not attend the January 2nd meeting. I think the date was a bit very close to the holidays and could not attend, but I sent a letter. This flat rate, is it something that is proposed strictly from the city, or is that something that is mandatory by this Prop 218?
Why don't you ask the questions, and then we'll answer them when you've completed, if you have a series of questions.
My point is, in this matter, I believe that the users shall be the payers. What I am reading from the numbers that were given in your Prop 18 pamphlets is that commercial represents 11.6 as far as meter demand factor, residential is 4.53, and industrial Majority of the users are commercial, that's industrial, those should be the payers. And I think we should work towards finding a method where those are the one paying the majority of the burden. Not having water conservation incentive seems to me totally irresponsible, even the climate change we are in, and even all the environment issues that we have. I just want to add, for comparison, give you an idea of what, I have another, I'm lucky to have another house, and that house is in Oakland, and I put the water rates, the units I'm paying in Oakland, big city, not comparable to Calistoga, I totally agree, is $3.45. The wastewater treatment charge I'm paying, $36.82, just elements of comparison. And another topic that I have not heard about so far is the quality of our water. I have concerns about that. I'm receiving regular letters about issues. I'm frankly not comfortable drinking this water, and when I'm away for two or three days, I don't have the same skin irritation that I have when I take my shower here. The water quality is something that should be addressed as part of this water rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So regarding the flat rate element, Dylan, if you can address, that's not driven by Prop 218. Is your question's flat rate relative to the wastewater charges, correct?
Is the flat rate that is proposed equivalent to residential, commercial, industrial? Is that, was that a proposal made by the city, or is that something that is, has been...
So Dylan...
Is something that Prop 18 is asking?
I believe you're, you're asking about the volumetric charge, which is the cost per 100 gallons of water. And that's driven by a court ruling in 2015. An appeals court ruled that cities can only charge the actual cost to produce the water. And so the city at one time had four different tiers, and we charged a different rate for the volume of gallon charge based on how much you were using. And the ruling said, "You can't do that unless you can prove that it costs more money to treat that water." And as we've gone through this study, we've not been, we can't do that. We can't justify it. So we, we have to remove the tiers, or we risk exposure to litigation and a challenge on that.
Yeah, that was not my question. My question is, would it be possible to have commercials, spas, restaurants, others being charged more per units than residential?
That, that was the answer. No, you cannot. What we do have is we do have what's called a meter demand charge. So because meters have different, you know, they, we have to produce different volumes of water at a different speed and more water, we charge what's called a demand factor on your non-residential user. So a residential user has a demand factor of one, but when you look at those numbers you mentioned, like a three-point something, that's the demand charge. So when you calculate the rate, it's the, the meter charge multiplied by the demand charge multiplied by the volume of water they actually use.
And on, and on water, you know, a gallon of water, whether it goes, goes to a residence or goes to a commercial property, as Dylan says, we can't charge more for. On the wastewater side, residential users pay a flat fee, commercial users pay a metered fee. So while they're contributing more to the wastewater system, as you identified, they're also paying more for that.
Or, but I think, what I'm asking is, I think it's substantial.
It is substantially more.
It is substantially more.
Substantially. Thank you.
Okay. And then relative to your Oakland comparison, I would love the opportunity to spread our cost out over millions of users. Unfortunately, whether you're a big city or you're a small city, your requirements to meet state standards are the same. And because we have a very small user base, 1,600 or-ish users, anytime there's an increase, there's a small base of people from, over which to, to spread that. Regarding the water quality, which is a very fair concern, the Public Works Director addressed that on the second. We are meeting all state and federal standards. There are occasions when, what's the letters, Michael? Mike?
THM.
THM, where we come out of compliance, which unfortunately is a common occurrence with many cities, and we work very hard to address that. But we also are dealing with, if you saw the presentation, an infrastructure that has 50% of its pipes, both inbound and outbound, approaching the 70-year mark. So, all right? Thank you. Any other questions, English or Spanish?
Donald Williams on View Road. I want to endorse the idea of rebates to the public. Because the, the budget, the general fund can pay for the, for the water, I think that the money should be drawn there from the general fund. However, I do endorse the idea, I do agree, that the water rates need to be raised in order to mollify the lenders so we can get past that fixation with them. And then once it's raised, it becomes a budget issue, how to rebate that to the public. I think Dennis, therefore, was on the right track, as I heard him refer to various budget items, because it becomes basically a budget question as much as a water issue. How is this rebate, where does this rebate come from? I endorse the idea of a rebate regardless of whether we get a grant or not, because presently, the, the city is spending, by the good fortune of the recovery, it's spending 40% more than it did just four years ago, $3 million more than it did just four years ago. So there's money here that wasn't here four years ago in the budget, and I think that we can look at the items in the budget, they can be looked at. Someone suggested a 3% cut across the board. Whatever arrangement is made, there is money, far more money than there was only four years ago, that can be used to rebate the increase in water rates. So, in a way, it's not that complicated. Raise the rates, satisfy the lenders, and then find a way to return it to the, to the public, regardless of whether there are grants or not grants. There are 500, almost 500 people sent a letter, and of the 100 or so who talked to me, almost none of them wanted to pay more. That's the lesson I'm learning from these letters, that people didn't want to pay more. And with a rebate, essentially, they won't have to pay more. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifications. There's nobody up here either, Don, that wants to pay more. Rebate concept is absolutely something that's on the table for discussion. This council has suggested that. It's something we can entertain. Regarding the $3 million more we're spending today versus four years ago, the vast majority, if not all of it, is being spent on deferred maintenance and deferred positions that we experienced for the six years prior to that. So because we make more money today, doesn't mean that we're living frivolously. We went through a almost 10-year period of time where we were not attending to what needed to be attended to. So let's bear that in mind. And yes, we are very happy. Our budget process is completely transparent, completely open to the public. You are all invited and welcome. We'll go into painstaking detail on decisions we're making on what we spend our dollars on and for what reasons. So, yes, take the rates to where they need to be to satisfy the lenders and to do the right thing. Yes, we can rebate out of the general fund. Nobody's disputing that as an option, and is being considered as an option, but it has to come from somewhere. And that becomes the budgetary process at that point. So, yes, we have $3 million more today than we did four years ago, but it's not like we're going out and paving the streets in gold, that's for sure. We're having complications paving the streets we have at this point. So thank you. Yes?
My name is Anna Guzman. I live in 1445 Calistoga in Lake Street. Si tiene usted razón, es en español.
Absolutely.
No es necesario cerrar la alberca, porque mi hijo aprendió a nadar en la alberca también. Este, pero cinco años se me hace mucho. Un año está bien de aumento, y buscar ideas como usted dijo, señor Dila. A mí me gustaría el bingo. El bingo nos divertimos todos. Ay, perdón. Nos divertimos todos y recaudamos dinero. En vez de un año, dos años, dos veces al año, y se juntan dinero para que el aumento no sea por cinco años, porque cinco años se me hace mucho dinero. Gracias.
What Anna is saying that she's okay with having increased on the first year, but to have increased over a period of five years is, is, is too much of an increase. And she agrees that it's not a good idea to close the pool because her son and her son, they've been using it a lot. And, and also she's saying that we, when we get together as a community and her husband shares the, the idea, we raise money. Yeah, we, as a community, we can do so much if we work together. She's proposing that we raise a lot of money during the bingo night for the firefighters. She thinks that if we do something like that, maybe once or twice a year, everybody will be, have fun, everybody will have a good time, and we will raise money to help with this problem. They, they like to have hands-on, they like to contribute to resolve the problem, and if you need their help, they are there.
Great, thank you. I have no intention of closing the pool. There are four other people who can decide that, but I was just using it as an example.
I have a quick question.
Please.
Gloria, can you tell me, if you know, over the last 10 years, how much has the general fund subsidized the water and wastewater fund? Just a guess.
I know I put the numbers together for Dylan, and so maybe he's...
Yeah, we pulled this figure.
So maybe he's got them.
Yeah, I know they were in the presentation slides, without rifling through my newspaper, or my, my stack of papers here, there have been several times where there were transfers made or loans made from wastewater side. It was about $760,000 since 2011, and on the water side, it was about 200 and, you remember, Gloria?
79,400 for four years.
Okay, so, so 80, so just, just shy of, about $300,000.
Twenty.
What we've also done is...
That's over seven...
That's since 20, about 2010.
Okay.
So in the last eight years, that's as far back as we looked. So to go back to the exact 10 years, we can go back extra and check.
And that is, just an important clarification, that does not include the impact fees that we received, which supplemented those transfers over those years.
Yeah, and those one-time impact fees have helped with debt service. And then the litigation costs, I think it's been 1.6 million. The general fund has paid for all of that.
Well, I'm just looking here at this income loss before contributions and transfers this last fiscal year, which is 744,000. So that was the shortfall. So that's, that's a really big number. I'm, I'm just wondering, over the last X number of years, you just said it was, the numbers you gave were significantly less than, this number's, they're almost the same.
Yeah, there's, you know, the last, the last, you know, when, when Silver Rose, you know, a couple of years ago paid an initial payment of $2 million, just this last year as part of this fiscal budget, you just saw, they paid another several million dollars. Years prior, Calistoga Hills made in-kind contributions, so they actually improved infrastructure, which you won't actually see those improvements in a, as a dollar on a line item here. You'll see it on a capital improvement list somewhere.
So again, though, what I was curious is the number without, without contributions and transfers. So just the basic loss based on revenue and expense, the bait, the date, the, you know, the annual operation, is that number different? the annual operation, is that number different than the numbers you just gave me?
I, I think, just to give you an exact number, if you don't mind, what I'll do is I'll make note, and we'll make sure and present that information of the annual, whether it's a surplus or a loss. We'll go back 10 years, and we'll provide that information to you. We'll go look right at the CAFER. These are the audited financials. Here's the number. The, 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 the reality is, as a practice, a loan and a transfer in those numbers shows up as, you know, a revenue in to the enterprise funds. So it actually looks like you've got a transfer, and it's a revenue in, so it shows up as a revenue, so it might make that number a little bit less. So we're kind of looking at, looking at it two different ways. So we'll, we'll make sure and provide the net surplus or loss, as you would see on a balance statement. But then I'll also make sure I've got those current numbers on. Here's the loans, transfers, any of those things, too. I think you'll want to look at them separately, but both will be informative.
Thank you. Yes, next.
Tom Ballser, 1705 Michael. I have a couple of questions about the loan. First of all, what is our interest rate on, on the enterprise loan debt?
We have, we have several, several debt issuances, and they all range in various ranges, so anywhere from just above 2% up to, on one, it's above a 5%, 5.3. So on the several issuances, it ranges, and it also varies depending on the year of the debt repayment.
So the average is somewhere around 3%, 3.5%?
I, it's, it's higher than that. We can go back and look exactly, but it'd take a little time to calculate. It would be higher.
Okay, and what is the total debt that's against the enterprise fund?
Just, just below $14,500,000.
And what, if we have this increase, what interest rate do you expect to accomplish by, by having this fund, this increase to the customers here?
That's a, that's a very good question. I do not want to overpromise and underdeliver. The last time we refinanced debt, which was last summer, we got a 2.44% interest rate. That was negotiated. It was a different process than we would have to use for, for this debt. I won't go into the details of why that is, but I'm, I'm optimistic by nature, and I want to be very optimistic, and, and I hope it will, I expect it to be considerable savings. But I don't know what the interest rate yet would be. I just don't have that answer.
Is it, is it going to be a quarter percent? Is it normally a half a percent, 1%, an eighth of a percent? Some sort of ballpark figure, maybe?
I, I can't give you a number, because I don't want you to hold it against me, but, but what I can say is when we work with our financial advisor, we list out all of our debt. And one of the things we do is we, we, we reach out to banks, and we look at potential interest rates, and what is the, it's called net present value savings. So as just a benchmark, if I can save more than 5% of my, if I can avoid 5% of my future debt, it's probably worth it to go refinance. In some cases, like last year, I think our net present value savings was like 12%. It was considerable savings. And so that made it easy sense to go refinance our debt. So I, I just can't give you a number. I just, I don't want to estimate it yet. But I think if, if we're paying 5% and we still hear that rates are near historic lows, there's room for savings. I just don't know what the number is yet.
One other question. When you make the debt payment, is it interest only, or are you paying back down on principal?
We, we pay both, principal and interest.
Okay, and that's advertised over how many years?
It's different schedules depending on the debt, so it ranges in some from 20 years to, one of our issuances was a 40-year term.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tom? In response to your debt ratio or percentage question, in the last 18 months, the Fed has increased the rate from 3.5% to 4.5%. There's a new Federal Reserve Chairman coming on, and he says he's going to increase it some more. So that'll probably go up another percent, 5.5, maybe 6. Now, that's, that's the internal interest rate that they use to borrow money from each other. If that goes up, ours goes up proportionally on, on new debt.
These are variable loans you have, or are these fixed rates?
Gloria, are they, I believe, I know most of them are fixed rates. I believe they're fixed rates.
So if we have variable rates and the interest rates go up, we're going to be in the same problem we are before, right?
No, when you, when you refinance, we're eligible for different kinds of loans, because it's a municipality, which we currently aren't eligible to do, so we can come in below what the market rate is on interest.
I speak about variable rates. I mean, the term of the, of the loans were from 2.75 to 4.75, so there was a max and there was a minimum. So depending on which year we were in, could be different. So it wasn't just a flat rate for all the years.
Some are variable and some are flat rates, is that what we're saying?
It's, it's, it's not a schedule like you would think of a variable rate if you're getting a variable rate mortgage, so it doesn't work that way. It would be an, over a 40-year term, you know, in, in the first five years, you might have a 2-point-something percent interest rate, and then future years, you've got a 3-point-something. So the rate does change throughout the schedule, but it's not like we're exposed to having a significant increase that's like a balloon interest payment. We, we don't issue debt like that, we can't.
I would just think with rising interest rates, which is going to happen, that it's going to be very difficult to be able to refinance all this money at a lower rate. So I, I don't know, I don't know if that's possible or not. You get a 1% increase in cost of your interest rates, that's, that's going to blow all your interest rates right now. You've got pretty low interest rates, in my opinion.
We, there are, there are lower rates available to, to us as a municipality that we are not eligible for at this particular point, so, thank you.
Yeah, the rates I was talking about are consumer rates.
Not municipality rates. Yes?
Hello again. Please forgive me if my question was already answered in previous meetings, but this is all new to me. Eight and a half years being on a private well with yellow water. So this is, this, having clear water come out is nice, but my understanding, you know, from the water being tested, I guess it's done on a weekly basis or something, but why does it take four months to get notification that certain levels are higher than normal?
Okay, I can have that answered. Any other questions?
That's my only question.
All right, thank you. Dr. Kern or City Manager Feek?
Mike's, Mike's pointing to me. There, there, there's several different tests that we do. So on the THM, which is probably the one you're speaking of, the city performs monthly tests, daily monthly tests. When we perform those tests, and we do a lot of testing up at the plant daily, this test where we go out in the system, you know, when we collect the sample, we have to send the sample off. It takes time for that sample to return. Sometimes we have to retest a sample, just to verify that there was actually an issue, we had something. And then we prepare a notice, we mail the notice. The notices that, that we send out are very similar to the notices that you'd see, you know, when I, I'm not a coffee drinker, but going into a Starbucks, you would see standardized notices across every Starbucks that some of the stuff in their product contains X. You know, the notices that we send out are very similar. We have a, we have a threshold, and if we ever go above that threshold, which is a, it's a permit limit, if we ever go above that, we have to mail notices, and we do. We try and do things, you know, we, we don't ever want to, what we call, get a violation, but when we do, it's, it's just based on, it exceeded what was our permit level. And so that's when we mail the notice out to everybody. If you are new to the system and you want to speak to Mike Kern, he's standing up in the corner, we could even show you where we do our annual water quality reports, which give a great summary of the water testing overview for the year. We make those available online, and certainly any specific questions you ever have, you can always reach out and we can answer.
Thank you. Again, Iris, if we can reiterate, we'll take all questions in Spanish or English?
Hello, my name is Aaron Winkoff. Live over on Oak Street. I just have one question. Sorry, I'm a little naive and new to what's going on. But I was just curious about what the percentage of the current operating deficits are due to processing, maintenance. I've heard many discussions about infrastructure development because of 70 years of infrastructure not being upgraded, but just kind of curious where these, what the real source of the operating deficit is? Just curious about how, how possible it is actually getting out from under the operating deficits.
Sure. Who would like to address that? I know it's, it's revenue in versus expense out.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, I think it's a very good question, and you know, when you say you're new to this, I think it's a, it's the right question. You know, when I started, this, I'll call it a structural imbalance, that we're not collecting enough revenue to satisfy the, the operational cost. When you look at it in an operational cost of your water and your wastewater enterprise funds, it's different than the general fund. We're not providing services. If you look at the general fund, we did a pie chart, anywhere between 60 and 80% of that pie is personnel cost. We provide services, and that's what the general fund does. When you look at wastewater and water, it's very different. So you have capital projects, eat a third of it, and these are all approximations, a third. You have debt service, which is about a third. You have your personnel costs, which might be less than a quarter. And then you have your other contractual costs, commodity costs for running the department. So it's a very different-looking pie chart. And if you ever want to look, that might even be informational to put together. It looks different. So when we, in the past, what the city has tried to do is try to use impact fee revenues, development revenues, to pay for some of this needed infrastructure repair. One of the things that this rate study does is it tries to build in routine maintenance repair. There's a, starts out as a $350,000 annual cost, which is replacing pipes and mains. Most people who live on Cedar Street would never know that when we have to turn off BARRY for a bridge project, we have to shut off fire hydrants and valves several, you know, stretches of homes back, just because the infrastructure's so old. We've got to chase stuff just to be able to turn off and isolate a water main. So part of this proposal includes capital infrastructure as a necessary operating cost. We have to replace pipe every year, something we have to do. So I can show the exact expenses and the breakdown, and I, and I think ultimately the answer is, I, I don't know that the city, personally, I don't, I don't know that, that one, the restrictions, the constraints, the items placed on us have ever been greater. Existing litigation, cease and desist orders, historic droughts, all of these issues. In addition, we've got really old infrastructure now, and, and it's, it's that important that we build into our main operating cost, replacement of infrastructure.
One of the biggest hindrances to us not collecting enough revenue is the fact that we don't have a large user base, like they would in the city of Oakland, to spread these costs over. And as mentioned last week, every single city up and down the county of Napa, never mind beyond, is addressing this exact same issue this year, because we are all underfunded in our revenue streams to operate the systems that we have to, while we're continuing to get burdens placed on us, by the unfunded burdens placed on us by the state of California. So.
One of the other issues to answer your question is, we have a 9% increase annually in the cost of the water that's wielded to us from Napa. It's our water, but we have to pay Napa to treat it and to pump it on up here. And they went through a study, very similar to what we went through, and they determined that they were undercharging us for the water, so they're going to pass those costs on to us, and I believe that's 9%. Am I right, Mike?
That's correct.
9% for three years?
I believe it's for three years. I understand that we're not the only one.
It's everybody serviced by that.
Yeah, right, everybody that's getting that water. Right, right, yeah.
And before anyone asks, we did dispute that increase, but it was validated through their study.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's one of the things that makes our deficit here worse.
Can I explain that very quickly?
Please, absolutely.
Lo que están discutiendo ahorita es que en sí el sistema de agua y drenaje de la ciudad es, es un negocio, es un, un departamento de la ciudad que no está, se está sosteniendo por él mismo. Estamos pidiendo dinero prestado del Fondo General, como les expliqué en el otro mire que tuvimos. Estamos trabajando con deficiencia. No tenemos suficiente dinero para cubrir los gastos que ese departamento ocupa. Necesitamos dinero para reparar toda la, el sistema de agua potable para mantener la planta de reciclaje que está trabajando 24 horas, 7 días a la semana. Eso no para de trabajar. Cuando nosotros jalamos el toilet, solo el agua se va, y nosotros no sabemos qué pasa cuando llega ya, ya se limpia y todo eso. El gasto del personal que atiende todo este departamento, o sea, son muchos los gastos que se hacen, y el, el, el departamento no tiene suficiente dinero para sostenerse por ellos mismos. Y todo esto trabajo se ha pospuesto por las administraciones anteriores hasta el punto de que ahorita tenemos que hacerlo y mirar cómo hacerlo.
So Aaron, you're new to this. You're generally not allowed a second bite at the apple, but you are well under your three minutes, so you can come back up.
Thanks for letting me continue then. One, one other question, just based on rough estimates, I think of what I've heard of $500,000 def, operating deficits per year, and a $14 million debt. It sounds like a lot of what we're talking about are current changes to the system that are taxing the system that much more. Obviously, there's a lot of historic precedence with some of these deficits. Are there any key points that you guys have seen and what you have looked at as far as numbers over the last 10, 20 years? That we can just, that we can associate some of these? Yeah, just the cause of the operating deficits coming from?
So the, the, the debt service from the past, we own that. We have to continue that. What the new rate study takes into consideration are capital improvements and debt service we're going to need in the future to make some of the changes. So it is a, what I refer to as a fully loaded program, the true cost of operations, you know, from this point forward, while still dealing with what the inherited or the debt that we have accrued has a cost impact to us for.
That, that debt, though, is it, I understand the debt, but just those historic deficits, what was the cause of those historic deficits?
Oh, not enough revenue generated from users.
I can take a crack at this.
Go for it.
So about 20 years ago, the city was mandated by the state to upgrade our sewer treatment plant. We are hitting full capacity. So that complete overhaul cost about 13, 14 million dollars. As the city manager said today, still on our books, we have about $14 million in debt service. The majority, large chunk of that stems from the initial sewer treatment plant upgrade, which was quite some time ago. When that occurred, and over time, you know, there's other infrastructure upgrades that had to be done, sewer pipes, water pipes, and those things, those things were neglected. The Mount Washington water tank we have up here, we just did that recently, but that's been on the books forever. So all of these things were kind of shoved aside and not done, because there was a lot of pressure put on city councils to not increase sewer and water rates, even though we incurred the significant expense in debt service of upgrading the sewer treatment plant. So now, we're sort of having to deal with this problem, because the city never collected the revenue from the user base over the last, you know, 20 years. And, and we have these enormous amounts of capital projects that just have to be done because the pipes are failing.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in Spanish or English? All right, not seeing anyone else come to the podium. I will close the public comment, bring it back to the council for further clarification discussion. Please know that we will be taking all the considerations, new and old considerations, into account over the next three years. into account over the next three weeks as we go through this process. If we come to the next meeting and there's still not a level of comfort by this council that it's fully baked, then we will continue again. We have no opposition to holding another community forum should the community so desire, and we will work through this process. What's important to be known, we are all in this together. Everyone who's sitting up here as well are rate payers, involved in our residences and in our businesses if we have them. None of us, and if I was one of the hundred people that Mr. Williams stopped outside of Cal Mart to ask if I wanted my rates to go up, my answer, absolutely, and knowing all the facts, would be no, I don't want them to go up, but the reality of the situation is they're going to have to go up. So with that said, we will adjourn this evening's meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, February sixth, and as Dylan has made a point to mention, and we up here will always mention, we are available to you at any time or point for questions, comments, concerns. Iris, please.
So vamos a terminar esta junta, pero si usted, vamos a llevarnos todas las opiniones y lo que se habló aquí, y se va a seguir considerando, se van a buscar las opciones. Tenemos tres semanas hasta el siguiente meeting, y si ustedes quieren contactarnos, quieren hablar con alguno de nosotros, están invitados también para el próximo meeting, y si necesitan que se haga otro foro comunitario donde quieran expresar su opinión, me pueden decir, y podemos hacer arreglos para hacerlo.
And for anyone in the Hispanic community that may have missed some of the points made, we will stay afterward with translation if you want any clarifications.
Y si alguno de ustedes no entendió algún punto de lo que se habló, pueden venir con nosotros, y podemos buscar que traducir su duda o su pregunta y hacer que se conteste.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone.